All second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Public comment, non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. It looks like we already have somebody racing up to the podium, to the... Bonsoir, madame. Ça fait très plaisir de vous avoir ici.
...the arts and the Heartland Creative Core Grants that are currently taking place in our county, several of them. And I wanted to give you an update on two of them. I hope you all had a chance to read the article about Diane Stern's project that she's doing with the Watch Program that was in the newspaper this week. She's doing a beautiful mosaic mural that will be a permanent public art installation for our community near the corners of Church Street and Washington. So I'm sure the city had some part in helping to approve that. So I want to thank you so much for that. And also thanks to Tamara Polly for providing a lovely space for our visitors and our community members to see that particular place. I wanted to also thank everybody who came out to attend the event for the Pebbles in a Pond Heartland Project. We had over 200 people come to that event. It was pretty busy, huh, guys? Mayor Mark was there and Councilman Hawkins was there. We invited all of the people that were running for public office to come and attend, to have a chance to just be seen by their constituents and have an opportunity to walk around and meet and greet. We had several people from the candidates for the Board of Supervisors, Darren Dues and Bez Levine were there, Levine, I'm sorry, Bez, were there to represent candidates for city council. And we even had the Democratic candidate for US Congress come and attend, which was really nice for him to come out on a rainy night all the way to Sonora and spent the whole evening with us. It was a whole lot of fun. Now, my next event with the Pebbles in a Pond Project is going to take place on Saturday, March 23rd. It is from 2:00 to 4:00. It is a general audience program for all ages. And the theme for this particular show is called "We, the People: The Stories of Our Diverse Nation." And I'm excited to announce that at that event, Richard Haratani, who some of you may know, is going to tell the story of his parents' experience being interred during World War II, sent to Colorado, and subsequently, his father's service in the 442nd, which was that brave corps of Japanese-American men who fought valiantly for our country and our democracy and our freedoms during World War II and helping to protect other nations as well. So that will be, again, a free event, Pebbles in a Pond Project, The Rippling Effect of Democracy. And we're having a wonderful response to the project. And that is all I have to say, and I hope I'll see you there at the free event.
You had said that was from 2:00 to 4:00?
2:00 to 4:00 o'clock at the Tuolumne Community Resilience Center on Bay Avenue in Tuolumne Township.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Well, yay, we're having more public comment than in months. Banner evening, thank you very much for coming, Ms. Dunn.
You're so welcome, I'm glad to be here. I'm Katie Dunn, President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm here, I want to piggyback on to what Beazie just was talking about with the Heartland Grants. One of the grants is that we were awarded was this traveling exhibit from the California Historical Society. It's telling stories of Mexican-California real life and myth-making. This is a huge, huge thing for our county. There is only a handful of counties that were awarded this traveling exhibit, and Tuolumne County is their first stop. So we're really excited about it. There's going to be a lot of activities and events surrounding this. The Sonora Chamber is planning one, but I'm not going to mention everything right now because I still have to get it approved. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that. And then also, we are going to be having a downtown sidewalk sale for the merchants in downtown Sonora. It's going to be April 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity for all of our merchants to move merchandise that's been sitting around for a while to make room for their spring collection to come in. It also happens to be the same date as the Home and Garden Show. So we're really hoping to pull people up from the fairgrounds to downtown Sonora. So this is our first annual, and the merchants are very, very excited about it. And then lastly, because my time is just ticking away here, I wanted to mention something that is really exciting. The Sonora Chamber is going to be having an opera at the Opera Hall. I know. It's May 18th at the Sonora Opera Hall. We have two singers and a pianist. It's opera and Broadway, so the first 45 minutes will be dedicated to opera and classical selections. There'll be an intermission, and then the last 45 minutes will be Broadway solos and duets. We're really, really excited. These are two ladies that performed in Calabasas County, two sold-out events, and we're really excited to bring opera to the Opera Hall. So that's all I have for right now. We're still working on the time, but just mark your calendars for May 18th. So we're still working, it may be, you know, 3:00 to 5:00 or something like that, so we're still working. We have a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss the details. And then lastly, I have six seconds, our next mixer will be March 19th at the Aronis Research Club. And my time is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. Is there any further public comment? We have our aspirants for office, et cetera. No? Okay. Well, it's very nice to have had so much already. With that, all closed public comment. Bring it back to the council for our presentation. We are honored again to have our own supervisor, First District Supervisor David Goldenberg here. Thank you very much, sir, for joining us.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city minister. Don't have a whole lot to report on the county. I mean, obviously, you know, we've had some items going on still, you know, at the board level that's been public information. We still have not published in a more robust format the priorities and goals from a workshop, but I had a meeting today on that and hope to see that in two to three weeks. Hopefully, that'll be released out. One thing I did mention on my last time before you was that I would be attending the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. What a great conference. It was really good. So much going on, and I was the only person from Tuolumne County that attended, and a lot of times at these conferences, you might have two, three, or four people. You can divvy up which meetings you're trying to make with one person. That gets a little difficult. I did attend meetings, Rural Caucus, you know, very important, of course, that's, you know, what we're in the heart of, as well as the California Caucus meeting. And it's interesting to see the interplay between, you know, people that are in the more urban areas versus rural. There was more cooperation than I expected, actually, which was a good sign. I was glad to see that. We, I went to the Finance and Pensions meeting at the very beginning of the conference, actually, the day before. I was invited to speak and participate in a roundtable at the Pew Charitable Trust. What it was, was a session on disaster resilience. And they were kind of keying in mainly towards the financial aspects and the impacts that we and local government have whenever there's a disaster. You know, but so they were, they were looking at that, but they also just wanted a better feeling all the way around. Excellent group. I hope to see a report come out on that, you know, maybe within the next few months. And I'll try to get some extra copies of that and distribute it, you know, when it comes out. One interesting thing that I learned that's pretty new is there's the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed in 2023 included something, the ability, which I don't know at the city level, but at the county level, we've never had the ability, if we did a project, to qualify for and actually receive tax credits. So it could be a solar project, or, you know, it might be hydrogen fuel, it could be any number of things. It's behind the, you know, the Clean Air Initiative type of things. But county government has never had the ability to get that credit. So sometimes the credit might be as much as 25% of the cost of putting something in. So now the county, and there's going to be some instructions coming out on this from the Department of Treasury, that the county will be able to, and I'm hoping that it carries down to the city as well. It should, you know, if they're going to allow, you know, full, full, you know, all the way down in the local government. An interesting thing, somebody asked a question, was that, well, what if, what if the county got a grant for a project? So an example, you know, let's say you had $100,000 grant for a $100,000 project, but it qualified for a 25% tax credit. How would the federal government treat that? The answer really surprised pretty much everybody in the room. We'll see if it actually holds true, but they said, no, you can use all your grant money, and it will still give you 25% back in this case. That's, you know, depending on the size of the project, that in itself could be extremely huge still. They talked a little bit about the, and this is kind of down to, you know, anybody that pays sales taxes, you know, you and I in our normal lives, it's called SALT, state and local taxes, that you pay. And a couple of years ago, I think it was, the federal government reduced the amount that you were allowed to claim on your tax return. Used to be, I think, unlimited, and then they took it down to 10,000. That's 10,000 in taxes. I don't know about you guys, but I, I'm not buying anything that I'm paying 10,000 in taxes, but they did implement it, and it was interesting, it cost the federal government 1.5 trillion dollars in lost income to implement that. So a lot of people apparently were getting a benefit from it, but what they did was, they changed what you're allowed to deduct from unlimited down to 10,000. And so that's where they lost all the money, but they gained half of it back. So we ended up paying anyways. So it's, it's shameful. There was a, one item of interest was FEMA. If you had a disaster and you applied for FEMA, you know, assistance in coming out of it, this could be from government, or it could be down to an individual property owner, is that you would put in an application, but you don't, you never knew where it's at. You didn't know where it was in the process, are you going to be awarded it or not? So they're going to implement a new system where you'll be able to go online and track it. Pretty good planning tool for budgets, especially because sometimes it might take three, four, even five years to get reimbursement. So we end up, the city, the county ends up funding the money a lot of times, banking on, hey, FEMA's going to reimburse, but you never know for sure. So that's a, that's a good tool to have, and I was glad to see them. Last couple items were more to California, but other states as well regarding, you know, the crumps that we've been getting in with the homeowners insurance, fire insurance. There was one, US Representative Kevin Kiley, he's Republican, introduced a bill, H R 6861, I think I read that correctly, sorry. Yeah, 6861. And that, my understanding is that would be a tax credit. They were looking at doing it for California only. That might be difficult to get through the rest of the Senate and Congress, right? You know, if it's only for California, they might not be too receptive. The other one was Congressman Adam Schiff introduced an item called the Insure Act, and it was more broad-based. I don't have a bill number or how that goes, I'm not sure how acts get treated as far as recognizing, but it's called the Insure Act. And that was, you know, you had to get in there and track that and see what kind of progress. Anyway, so it was good to see that at the federal level, they were recognizing the impact on insurance. And this isn't just fire insurance, this could be for floods, hurricanes, earthquakes, all of those things. So it's good to see, you know, these things. And that's pretty much it. I'd be glad to take any questions as you have them.
Thank you all. And I...
Sorry?
So I was just trying to offer everybody a chance to...
Oh, okay.
Get first bite at the apple there. But, so the, I had a question about the Finance and Pensions workshop, because that was, so this was while you were in DC, right?
Correct.
What was, what was the discussion about pensions then? Because obviously, it's a big, a huge issue for us in California, but it's different from state to state.
Well, it certainly is, and, you know, depending on, you know, the locality and, you know, whether you have a defined pension plan or other types, you know, so they didn't have any, there was no specific bills or anything that were, you know, moving forward on that. They were more talking about some of these other, you know, details that they got in on, you know, how to track things.
I was just trying to, trying to figure out how we profited, you know, because obviously, it's huge to us.
Right.
But, how are we better off anyway?
You know, I mean, when you have, you know, they have the classic, you know, numbers, you know, formula versus whatever the new ones call them, so gradually, there's some relief.
I was hoping that there would be some magic bullet there that you'd be able to share with us, so.
There's no, no such fairy.
The other question that I had was that the, from the H R 6861...
Yeah.
That would be a tax credit that would then be deductible from our federal taxes if it were to pass, go through, or?
Yeah, and, you know, so that, you know, the bullet points that I had here was create a 25% tax credit for wildfire mitigation efforts. So if you were doing home hardening, you know, and it wasn't covered under any other program, just you as a homeowner decide to do it, you could get a 25% credit. And it would be capped at $25,000 a year. And the, it would phase out for anybody that had income, I think, at $200,000 or above. It phases out, they wouldn't get the credit, which is typical of a lot of those types of programs.
So this is obviously still in the legislative stage and optimistic, but if people wanted to contact our congressman or other interested parties, then they would just refer to either support or being against that H R 6861?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, anything that can bring some relief to our efforts.
We have a lot of interested people.
The real relief we need is when we do all this work, and we've already done a lot of work in the county, and the city's done, they have a tremendous amount of work done too, is getting the insurance companies to recognize the value of that and how it's protecting properties. And thus far, they have not been very good about that.
That's a big issue.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Goldenberg.
Okay.
We appreciate you coming and sharing.
You bet.
Okay. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Is there any public comment on this? No. Seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Any abstentions? Five zero zero. New business. So, "Consider the Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2324 Midyear Budget Update with Recommended Adjustments." Chris Gorski, our Administrative Services Director. Thank you, Mr. Chris Gorski. And I think we're going to have a slideshow to go with it. And there we go.
So this is the fiscal year 2324 midyear budget update. Why do we do a midyear update? The annual midyear budget review is an essential element in maintaining fiscal stability. It provides the city council an opportunity to review the general fund budget, make adjustments to budget as results are realized, understand city finances as the fiscal year ends, help shape budget development for next fiscal year. Some of the challenges and opportunities, staffing, recruitment, retention, compensation. We did do a citywide compensation study, so there's still an implementation that could be discussed. Also, long-term financial planning. Basically, what do we do with the Measure Y revenues that we've been accumulating as unreserved fund balance and going forward into next fiscal year? So the general fund revenues have been very good. Measure Y is our 1% sales tax that the citizens passed in November 2022. This is our first full year of Measure Y. The revenues for the first six months were 2.27 million, and that was ahead of what we had expected when we originally did the budget, remembering the budget was done last April, May, June, when we thought that with interest rates higher and CPI going out of control, that there would be a recession at some point. So that may be delayed until next year, but again, there probably is some... The sales tax, the normal 1% that we share with the county, those have been within our budget. We have more experience with those, so our budget is more accurate. Those came in at 1.769 million for the first six months. Transient occupancy tax, those have exceeded our expectations. First half revenues are 319,000 versus 294 last fiscal year. Full-year estimates will be increased by 25,000 as part of one of our adjustments for this midyear. And as a note, this is the first time that the T O T has exceeded the pre-pandemic levels. Public benefit fee for cannabis, we have now two full-time dispensaries running in a city that happened for the full six months, and this will be the first full fiscal year that we've had two of them. The first six months, we had $371,000 in revenue, and that again exceeded our expectations. And so we're increasing that revenue and budget by 100. Continuing with general fund revenues, the one thing that has been a little slower was building permits. First half revenues are at 64,000 versus 101 last year. We're going to reduce those by 25,000, our estimates for the remainder of the fiscal year. The California Public Utility Commission did make a big change to the solar reimbursement rates, or NEM, and NEM three. And so a lot of people raced to do solar projects last year, and so that affected us. We got some of that revenue last year and last this year. Property tax revenues, distributions basically occur in the second and fourth quarters. Revenues are as expected. We do get S M S from the county. We have $438,000 in first half revenues versus 396,000. General fund expenditures, salaries and benefits. First half expenditures were 44% of budget, 3.3 million of an estimated 7.5 million. That is low, and the reason is that we've had difficulty recruiting and retaining positions. Pay increases and recruitment incentives were approved in the first half of the year for the police department to help recruitment, but we are certainly have been found ourselves with a lack of staff. Cities-wide compensation study was completed late last year, which shows the city wages are generally behind other agencies. And there's continued difficulties recruiting and retaining staff. Again, hopefully that's now changing. We have some, some things in the pipeline for police staff. On the operating expenditure side, we're at 53%, or 1.706 million. It's a little bit more than half, and that is expected because many of the contracts are new early in the year. We do have some miscellaneous adjustments that we'll get to. And here is our revenues for the general fund for the first half of the year. You can see in the columns that are gray, that is this fiscal year. The ones on the left are last fiscal year. So we can see that measure Y is at 2.27 million. The 1% local sales tax is at 1.7 million. Property tax at 438. The V L F backfill at 246. Franchise fees at 48. Business licenses at 52. T O T, again, first time at pre-pandemic levels at 319. License permits at 64,000. Cannabis public benefit fee was 371,000. There's some miscellaneous intergovernmental at 75.6. Charges for services are 44,000. Lines in forfeitures, 27,000. Rental income, 32,000. And interest at 88,000. And when we changed banks, we basically got a guaranteed rate at 4.65, and that is certainly much higher in the L A F that we've received in the past. So there is an adjustment for interest. So we have 5.8, 5.8 million in revenues, and some transfers in for measure I for total city revenues, total general fund city revenues of 7.2 million or 53% of what we expect. On the expenditure side, you can see salaries and benefits at 3.3 versus the budget of 7.5. And again, those are because we've had chronic openings in P D. Supplies and materials at 1.5 million, at 53%. Utilities are within line at 174, and then transfers out at 163. That's primarily our contribution to the CalPERS prefunding trust that we do each year. So we have total expenditures of 5.1 million, 1.8 million. And so the total add to our general fund unreserved fund balance is just over 2 million. And so here's the general fund fund balance, and you can see that we have quite a bit of unexpended measure Y revenues, and we're projecting the June 30th number to be in excess of 1 million. Measure I is the half cent sales tax that we passed in 2004. This is an update of that, and you can see that there is some money in the fund balance for fire, police, and public works. We use that money for operations now. It completely goes to operations to support the general fund. The only exception to that is we're buying a street sweeper in the first or the second half of the year from measure Y monies from, for public works. So that would be a replacement street sweeper. This chart shows how the general fund expenditures are broken out by budget. You can see 42% go to the police department, 16 to fire, 14 to public works, and then everything else is some small miscellaneous. So we have our recommended budget adjustments for the first half of the year. On the revenue side, of course, we're seeing additional measure Y revenues. So we're increasing that estimate by 300,000. T O T, we're increasing that estimate by 25,000. The public benefit fee, we're increasing by 105,000. Building permits are negative 30, and interest is significantly higher. So there's a budget adjustment of 152. The total revenue change is of 552,000. And then we have some expenditure adjustments for the second half of the year. Travel and training in several different departments are basically 8,000. There is a need for, when we closed our fleet department, there was some unanticipated unemployment insurance costs. Outside services, one is to purchase a program to, to manage basically community development and public works, and that includes pavement assessment index, inventory of signs, and then doing building permits online. And so that's part of that adjustment. Miscellaneous increases to community development for C S G, which is our consultant. We have $1,800 to pay for the encouragement permit for the round-up raid. Outside services. There were some emergency tree removals. That was the $5,200. Oh, there was a generator switch at the police station that failed, so that was $6,500. There was some unexpected repairs on our dump truck that we use at public works for $8,500. The ed center required HVAC repairs. That did not cool this summer when we tried to run it. And then there was, for the old cemetery, they want to repair headstones, and that was $2,000. And then an additional contribution to our CalPERS prefunding trust of 150. So on the expenditure side, it's 351,700. And the net change, and a positive change of the general fund would be that 200,000, 200,300. So conclusion and next steps, these financial results for the first half are based on the most current financial information and economic assumptions available. As this report shows, revenues have been better than anticipated, and the original budget was, as the spike in consumer price index was just beginning to affect the economy. And again, we had sort of anticipated that there would be some recession in this fiscal year. This was a status quo budget by the departments. There were no capital improvements or any maintenance addressed. We are working on a C I P or capital improvement plan, and that will be rolled out as we do next fiscal year. And just to note, the council did allocate additional resources in the first half of the year to recruitment efforts at Sonora Police. That included some salary increases and incentive bonuses for hires, new hires. We're also working with Hepic, which is a company that helped us create a recruitment plan for P D. And just to note, that would be impossible without measure Y. We just would, we would have no. While revenues and expenditure trends are intact, the city has several obligations that we have to account for. Of course, we're blocking CalPERS pensions. So we do recommend that we continue with the contributions to the trust, the CalPERS prefunding trust as often as we can. And then we also have the implementation of the compensation study. So to sum up, the staff recommends the city council accept this budget update and approve the recommended adjustments as written. And any questions?
So, are there any questions for staff?
I don't have a question. It's just a comment on page 24. On page 14, you're saying that the budget adjustments that are recommended by C S F to complete the fiscal year and to continue to navigate the economic uncertainty ahead. I just thought your report was really good forward thinking. We might get a soft recession. We'll hope for that, but we could actually get a larger one. And the budget you've created reflects that forward thinking. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sigurdsson.
I'll tell is super impressed and, and of course delighted that our budget is in such pale condition. Excuse me. I was wondering about, you know, the charges for services that are outdated. Are we planning for updating?
Yes, we are, we are planning. It's just something that we have not had time to, to address. Think that in the next fiscal year, that certainly we want to look at a fee study. You know, those fees are charged to, you know, the point of paying for what it costs down for a service. And at this point, those developed 20 years ago certainly do not pay for what's down.
Well, thank you for a very thorough job.
I had questions, but Chris answered them in the present, as is your usual standard when it comes to the budget. So.
Appreciate it. Okay, go ahead. Well, I'll ask a question first, and then we'll do comments for after public comment maybe, or just because we won't have time for comments. Would you be gracious enough, Director Gorski, to just kind of describe some of the outside services and what those monies are going to? Because when I asked about it, it was clear and very helpful to me to know some of the specifics. And I'd like the public to be able to share in that knowledge, because when we see somewhat $120,000 being spent on outside services, having it clear, well, clarified would be really helpful.
Well, part of that is a, we're looking at a software package to help public works and community development do a pavement assessment. And that way we would know basically the condition of all of our roads, exactly where potholes are. You know, if someone hits a pothole and we get a claim, we'll know where to look. We can, you know, one of the limitations we've had with CalO E S, when we've had rain damage, flooding damage, we've had to go to Google Earth to prove road conditions. And sometimes it's a very good pictures. Sometimes they're not good enough to prove the condition the road is in. And we've had things denied because of, this would allow us to prove the CalO E S, the maintenance schedules, and the current conditions of all of our roads and signs for that matter. It's a sign inventory as well as part of that. It also includes things like building permits online, a complaint line, so someone could provide a complaint on the website. You know, potholes here or whatever, sidewalks needs to be addressed, whatever that may be. And that would be then something that would be managed by public works, and they could see exactly where complaints are coming from and what roads or things need to be addressed. So we're trying to, you know, become a little more technical, tech savvy, enter the 21st century, if you will. The other thing is, we have a contract consultant in community development that first half of the year was a little more expensive than we anticipated. And they do things like planning and building inspections, code enforcement, and those type of things. And we need to put a little more money in there to finish the year.
And the online permits, for example, that will just help smooth the process so that paperwork can't get lost, and it'll be something that can be submitted from home, for example, or at one's office.
Yeah, it makes us more efficient. I mean, it makes staff time much more.
Going back to the consultancy firm that we have, essentially doing code enforcement, just your recommendation to be, to increase fees eventually, the idea being that shouldn't those fees cover the cost of the employee that is levying said fees, right?
Yeah.
And that's what we're looking at adjusting in the near future.
Yeah, the fees we charge should cover the cost for us to do that.
Yeah. So currently, we're not at that stage.
We're nowhere near that.
So I just. I want the public to know we're not just arbitrarily raising fees. It's about breaking even, let alone turning a profit. But yeah, thanks for that explanation.
Yeah, it's the, it's the cost, right?
Yeah.
There's no profit.
Thank you very much, Director Gorski.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Yes, delightful. I've been waiting months for you to come back.
I just want to commend Chris and the whole administrative staff for pulling together not only this report, but the vital revival of the budget. And it just feels so good to sit out there in the audience and hear such a positive feedback on what's happened in the last year. And I do want to thank everybody here at the city for the efforts that, that you all made to help pass measure Y. I think there we have evidence of the, the gift that just a little tiny pop in our taxes can give to a whole lot of people and to our community in a very broad way, and to the many people who visit Sonora. And on that note, I want to just remind everybody, not only do we have an incredible staff of emergency service people, the fire department and the police department, but I think of the many times that I've come in here to this building and worked with the classified employees, with the, with the staff that's here. And we've had such a shortage of cutbacks in staff over the years that I would like to hope that eventually you guys can move in the direction of being able to re-enter some of the positions that were taken away over the years and see if we can revitalize the effectiveness of what we do right here in the, in the people-to-people interface. And of course, I realize the practical measures of getting things online and all that stuff. I get that. But in the meantime, walking in the door and having a human being that I can talk to when I have to deal with stuff in the city, or just coming in and knowing that there's somebody that's taking care of programs in the city, or somebody to report to that's a human, is really a gift for all of us. And I know it's a big commitment, but I'm just saying, it should be nice if we could revive and upgrade the quality of life for the, for the people who work here in this building doing administrative services. So thank you, guys, and thank you for the good work. Yay. I'll go spend more money in downtown Sonora.
Thank you for the kind words, Beesley. Seeing no further public comment, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and I would hope adoption. But I'm sorry, yes, of course, now it's time.
I was just going to say that, you know, we were during COVID, we were one of the few cities in the whole state that did not cut our staff. They kept everyone going. And that was due to the fiscal responsibility and fiscal conservancy of this council. And I think this just shows even more how responsible the city of Sonora is with the people's tax dollars.
Thank you, Councilman Hawkins. Any further comment? Before we leave this topic, I wanted to, to add a few words, and that is we And that is, we see from this budget at least a pretty nice glimmer of hope in what we are trying to achieve here, where a dedicated fund source, Measure I, in less than a decade and a half, had been used up where it is no longer sustaining the, the intent that it was actually passed for, that it is inadequate. And we are seeing with our Measure Y funds where we're starting to claw our way ahead of the, of the curve, so to speak, of our costs. And that is something that with three new member, well, three members vying for city council seats in the chambers, I wanted to just remind us and remind the, the public that we are trying to create a different dynamic here where we can keep up with the costs of public services and providing good city staff. They will take growth and a, and look towards dynamism in the city. And I think we're on a good path. It's really encouraging to see us positive on some of these numbers and unexpectedly so. Thank you very much, staff, for such bringing us in this direction and the good work on the budget. With that, I would love to entertain a motion to adopt this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. And any extensions? This is unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Councilmember reports.
I can go.
Why don't we? Okay, go ahead.
Only two things to report. I've got a steady stream of emails from citizens about homeless and dog droppings on the sidewalk and road issues. And me and the city administrator have stayed on top of all of those complaints. So I don't want to thank people for reaching out and telling us what the problems are so that we can address them. Secondly, I will be attending a Sonora, the Seventh Day Adventist is having an event at the Opera Hall this Friday called Cultivating Connections. And it is International Women's Day they are celebrating. And all proceeds from that will go to Fund Project Hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Sagerstrom, why don't we go with, it's always the fun to hear what you've been to.
Ladies first, yes. Gentile. I attended the Water Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday, virtually. There's new directives from the Department of Water Resources and a watershed resiliency program that's building watershed-based solutions, climate resilience and equity statewide by collaborating with local partners. However, the state failed to really define what the watershed parameters would be and many aspects of the program. So left everyone sort of hanging and waiting for more information. There was also a presentation from Water Solutions Network that seemed to, was looking for collaborative action toward equitable and sustainable land and water stewardship, which essentially was the upstream and downstream people talking together. The upstream people in the meeting seemed to indicate that this, they have tried this strategy before and it has failed. So I think that they're going to send some representatives, but they didn't see much hope in, in the Water Solutions Network actually reaching its goals. And then I attended the City Housing Element Meeting, which was very interesting and the CSG consultants were there. And Sonora, they were quite complimentary to say that they'd never seen a housing element update that only had two sites that, that needed to be discussed and improved upon. So, and it was, it's very, all this material is very interesting, the Sonora race and ethnicity, our population by age, our household characteristics and median income comparison to the, to the county in particular. So, and I felt quite confident after talking with the consultants that they are super capable and also very, very interested in the well-being of our community. And let me see, I went to talk with Marie Alvarado Gill on Friday. And in her comments to the, to the attendees, she mentioned that housing was her first, second and third priority that had arisen from a district polling. Economic development was also there, but housing is at a critical stage for our district number four. And her associates, her office has local meetings every Tuesday over on Green Street. And you can make an appointment to talk to our state senator's representative on her website. So, which I thought was, you know, she's trying to keep in touch with, with every aspect of her district and every location. Also, I learned at that meeting that the Tuolumne Mule Tribe has bought the blood bank and is going to be putting in a, I believe it's an maternity care facility. So that was very exciting. And also I noticed walking last week that the police vehicles have arrived.
Yay.
I think, I mean, they looked pretty cool anyway.
Not, not yet. They are, not yet, they are on their way. Uh, no, I don't think we have.
When do we get SUVs?
We might have, we might have some for last, from last year that we received, but our five new patrol vehicles, we are looking to bring in momentarily.
Okay, because I had never seen the SUVs. I sent you a picture.
You did.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, I finally saw them. All right, okay. And also just one, one update I would love from Chief New to know how she did on Family Feud. Sorry, I don't, I don't have, okay, I don't, I don't, I don't have cable, so thank you.
Yeah, so we did air on February 22nd, it was season 25, episode 125. And unfortunately, we did not win on the Family Feud, but we had a fabulous time. It was really fun. You know, my, my sister, her husband and two, two kids picked me as the aunt to go on as number five. So I felt very blessed that they, they chose me, but we had a great time. We, they flew us out to Georgia, filmed it in Georgia and that was last May. And they make you wait that entire time before you can say if you won or not. Very last question, the very last question. Otherwise, we were taken the whole way. We had the lead the entire time and it came down to the last question, which we didn't get, and they got a chance to steal and they stole it. The question was, he surveyed 100 women and said, in my dreams, it's just me and Steve Harvey where? Yes. And the one thing, I mean, we, my brother-in-law was like backstage at the feud and that was on there, you know, on TV. I set out to dinner at a nice restaurant that was up there. My niece said on vacation, that was up there. And there was only one answer left. And it ended up being at the bank. And they got that one, so. So we didn't win, but it was a lot of fun.
It sounds fun, but boy, I'm really backwards on pop culture. And with that, was that the conclusion then? Thank you, Chief New. Okay, cool. Councilman Merrill.
I don't have too much to report on, seeing it was, as it was between, you know, third week in the first of the month, not too much happens in those last few weeks. But I will say, I thought we had a very productive meeting with the county regarding our current homeless situation. And I think there was a lot of air that needed to be cleared, a lot of clarifications that that got done. I see us trending in a very positive direction after that meeting. Having said that, if there's one thing that I've learned in my, you know, first half of my term here, and really just being a professor and a teacher now at Columbia, it's that communication is critical and making, setting like expectations and, and making sure our policies are as crystal clear as they can be, I think is a very powerful tool for us to use as a council. And going forward, I know I've spoken with a few city staff members, I know I've spoken with a few council members. I did want to bring up the possibility of starting our own city-level homelessness committee. I go back to the, the survey that, that we gave our, our city, you know, last year and how homelessness was, you know, the, the hot button topic by, you know, a vote of two to one. I, I just personally want to acknowledge that and, and say, hey, you know, I'm not sitting here trying to, to form yet another committee for yet another problem and have yet another government solution to a societal problem. But I think it would go a long way in helping us better communicate with the county, making sure the county understands where the city is at regarding our policies and procedures and stuff on that. I think it would be a great opportunity for our business community to come in and get immediate feedback and offer input on, you know, hey, how can we deal with someone sleeping in our, you know, the doorstep of our business, you know, just some basic Q and A stuff. And I, I just really want to, you know, heading into the latter half of my term here, really dedicate the next council to outreach in our community in all facets. And I see starting our own homeless committee as being a, a really great step towards that. You know, again, it's a number one issue. I want to move the needle. I think our people are expecting and demanding solutions. So I, I can't see a better forum than us going down that road and, and making that decision personally. So for future consideration for an, an agenda item, I would love to consider forming a city-level homeless committee, homelessness committee, my apologies, whatever we want to call it. That's up for debate, I suppose.
Thank you, Councilman Merrill.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Hawkins.
So this is the last of the election, night before election night, council meetings for Mark and myself. So we've actually been in a race and no one realizes it. No, we've been putting each other's signs back up. So I've enjoyed working with Mark. I'm feeling really good about the, honestly, whoever attains the seat of council member. We've left the city in a really good spot financially. When I, when I came here in 2010, it, it was bleak. Everything was in the red. We couldn't get new police cars. That took a while. And then when we did, the city administrator at the time, not Tim Miller, was really upset that we did not get hybrids. So a lot has changed with this council and I'm really proud to see the direction it's gone. I'm proud to see new people take, take charge and move forward. So, but it's been really good working with Mark and I just want to make it very clear
28, 30 hours and we will probably have results. I imagine everybody, well, half the people in this room are Twitter with that.
I will do one last thing to report. I, it's not that I'm not going to be at anyone's watch party tomorrow. I just have work until seven. So if you guys are going later, I will be there. And secondly, if someone wants to keep my one-time tradition, seeing as we've only had one election, I love going to the county admin building, like right when the results are announced and seeing as best, I know this is your first time running, it's really cool to see how it actually runs in real time. So to all prospective candidates, give a huge shout out to the people actually counting the votes. And I think it goes a long way. Like I, I broke down in tears when I found out I won, just going there and, and getting the word firsthand from Jane Braga that night. So it was a really powerful moment. If you guys find that, that break, you know, to excuse yourself from your watch party, I really recommend going and doing it. It's something that you, you'll never forget. So hopefully never forget in a good way. I know Darren's in the room, sorry, but I love you, Darren.
Well, and it still surprises me that neither of you exhorted the public to go out and vote to make sure that they have their ballots in in a timely fashion. Tomorrow is the, tomorrow 8:00 PM is the deadline for getting ballots in. This is obviously a pretty important aspect of functioning democracy. And for any people who haven't voted yet, I think there are, well, one, doing it would sure be a contribution to the system. And I believe that there are provisional ways, even if one is not registered to vote yet, to go in to the elections office, register and get a provisional ballot. So with that, I would go back to the, I mean, after all the election talk, I just was surprised that you guys who almost never miss anything, don't get ready yet, I'm going to be at least two minutes.
Point of order.
You know, I, I will say on the voting subject, I just, I just heard on NPR that this is actually the lowest turnout that we've had in, for a primary election in a long time. So Sonora, California, let's get those numbers up, please. There you go.
I think we're doing better than the state average. So I also was one of the council members meeting with the county about the homeless. I'm a little bit less sanguine about the results, but talking is a good way to start. And so there are some issues that we would still like to work out with the county. We will continue to try and do that. I, you stole my thunder about, Andy, about the, a local city homeless commission where we, or committee, where we would try and help with finding new solutions. We've been in some ways leading here locally, thanks to imaginative staff and good work by them and our attorney. I hope we can continue to do so and I would love for us to talk about forming a homeless committee in order to continue that and to improve things in Sonora vis a vis the homeless. I also attended the Access Tuolumne meeting. They would welcome another volunteer or two or more if anybody cares to be on a, an exciting and dynamic new, in some ways, organization. This is the local news feed and the effort is to make it far more than just news, but a media outlet for the county to deal with county issues, for people who want to get into filming and creating their own shows. They have courses and teaching for that type of event. It's really cool. I have never veiled myself to it, but when I'm in public, I think I probably should have. Anyhow, pretty cool. They would love some more volunteers. I attended a fire safety meeting where they can also, I think, use somebody else. Chris was, do I remember that correctly, that they needed another body there? No. Doesn't matter. Okay. And I, the housing element was really, really cool to be in such a good position as a city and how we are housing element needs. Then I attended and met with our state senator, Alvarado Gill, and a few other notables, which was, was an evening with Mayor Protem Sagerstrom. Was that? That was three minutes, sorry. I will, probably, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.